Welcome to the Lance Falls, City Lance Falls County Council meeting. It's the 24th at seven thirty in time for a regular session. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Ben.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice.
First thing we do is open up all the council meetings with a public comment period. Now moving to the floor of the public comment. Anybody had related to address the council, please come forward one at a time. Say your name and address. Now so remember there's a three minute time frame of the public comment. Asking you to address the whole councils and group and not single out any one council person. Also like to remind us all that this comment period is not a dialogue or conversation but it's with common. Not seeing anybody coming forward. Peter, anybody online?
No. You can't see why I'm not doing.
Next, next up, we'll have Bill Norton from our Water and Sewer Superintendent. Come and give us an update and ask Mr. Norton to come and say hello to us. Give us an update. Most important on my understanding was thinking about how we, the final dressing of the electrical switch panel that died in the assembly.
Yes. Seven twenty-three. The switchgear of the platform. Nation Power. We knew it was trouble. One of the first things that especially speaking, I think, that was one of the priorities to prepare. The whole, yeah, it's true. With electric, we're more. It's probably the first year of the city. Trying to get through the first, go through the possibility of engineering. Selecting initiatives. Players know just about what you said, right? But we will move next month. Did, now, what we do. Send to EFC with their approval. So, to find the opportunities. Then we see. See whether it's going to be up there. I'd face them. But they're all. Have this, this, probably sixty months. Changes. Getting that. So, so. Moving on to the battery switchgear on the second third. To know that all. Switchgear, switching, two, three last minute. So, just came in, shut it down, try to switch lines and. Yeah, but it's been working out. Successful working on the switchgear, remembering inside. Like that you sort of. Was, was maintained, attempted going for this danger until we get to. Completion of the water. So. That's my mind of the same option. Trouble sharing. Reestablishing, take that. Found out that. That. Was it, oh, well, we were, we established how, what said, there was no worry about the water switchgear. So that. Take us. Two days to see what we do. I decided my whole switchgear. Going to prison. But then we push it. So it had, knew it. Was available. Knew it was going to be somewhere. Do not see them. So, we went ahead and did that. We needed three hundred thousand dollars to secure switchgear. We were able to save that two hundred thousand dollars. Twelve twenty-four, like, surplus and ten different months, except we opened that total amount. So we secured that. We also had ring generator powering, two reasons number one. What I don't think, because if that switchgear failed, we had to do that for five. So, this is, we had two generators. Having on site, ready to go down, gave me lots of. Then the grant was ready. I hope to bring in the, new switchgear. We started the project first Monday of February. Completed, private, Friday, same week, which is incredible, just incredible. We thought some day I should go to work. And bring this and all that. If that's what. Ready, go ahead. Turn switchgear on, bring power back. Paint on, tie each other that Monday and Friday. So we had. So, we spent already two hundred thousand. Do not see for seven. Hilton now and just, oh, right, you just. So, funny, I said, I said, three hundred thousand dollars. On quarter. Uh, better. That's a, of the twenty-five thousand. Realize. That's on. Such. The re-instruction funds different from the fund that, sorry. Certain bonds, yes, but we. One setup. Basically, by the means of all communities that, that, that used. So, for all some. That's.
No, it is, the Siemens died back here.
No, they still. I swear on the system. Still. Support that system first, and also the institutional work. Where appears. So. System. Thank you.
Well, like, there's, he gave us working for the. A switchgear. That, um. Earlier, we're talking about. The whole, the whole, that's bigger, I think, fourteen, sixteen.
Well, it was.
Okay. Apparently, yeah.
We don't. It's, 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 like, so far. We, uh. Right here, something very concerning. So, you know, we didn't get a call hard, but somewhere, probably seventy-one, seventy-two. By the time we did, it was probably four or five months. So, it's, uh, two, three years since we gave us the version edition on the, the issue on the. First, just for.
I know we've been trying to get funding, being on, in, of course, that we can hopefully cross the testing.
You don't have to do funds, we're still. Negotiating, but, uh. Only conversations with we are seeing, about seeing. All the funding sources. We've been probably had four or five different meetings with the EFC over the last three months. Because there's questions on additional engineering for, if they want some more information. To update with. Real operators, real processing toll numbers. They want to, part of the upgrade. If I'm committed, like, different phases, uh, DC, okay, upgrade. So, it's a level.
Yeah. Sorry, but now, some of the other, other, like. Like, where we'll have to repeat that to that thing.
Well, if you, if it's easier to do that, setting, well. Using the higher level, everything for forty-one. Forty-one. Well, you know, last, two lowers there, thirty-four. Much more efficient. It's, I prefer going for, uh, technically, it's lower. Other, so, they're very, very efficient. Much easier. So we use the two existing for it, last one's forty-one eighty-seven, all changed about, everything's been for. So it's one system. Uh, another cost factor was that, uh, the old. Were back to over nineteen cents. It's good habits. So, so they have to, a little wire, so a lot of stuff, a lot of distribution points are gone. So we had, uh, go ahead. Same impacts. They might have to get a distribution line. So, it could be my, it could be my.
So the fourteen to twenty million dollars, if you're finally done, you're a hundred percent done with the full engineering of the system. Includes an entire new electrical system for, that's right. From sub to nice, everything, the entire plant running, the game. Always, they've been, they'll be, and they had. There's a lot of different ways to make sure that our facility has all you did. So when one goes down, you have a source for that. That's one of the two, we have a switchgear. If you have a switchgear, you can switch it.
So, uh, we will sell that. To dedicate lines, also to on-site. So that for any needs. Which probably, and it's not under. Our game in some way, like breaking people's sense. It's, it's not how. But it's not prepared, so it's not very quiet. Or, yes. So, we've not, not only those two dedicated lines, but on-site generation powers. That's the part. Isn't that free?
Can you talk a little bit about the, you've applied during my term, your term, were just, as I mean, my office. During this three years, we replied two or three times, two, two times for full funding for this. And it's not scoring all because, let me explain that a little bit, tell me. Doesn't score well. See everything. Because they said, this, this. So, one says, I thought. I think they're not. So, probably, they're, right, one of the. Secondly. We're not going to continue separate, particularly, just, so. That's, so. So, we need all standards. Set up. Two ones that we more. Be all, like, criteria. We also don't need extended to, you know, anymore. Less. So it's almost like eight hundred dollars. For the. In that font. Criteria. We are an environment justice. That. We also were starting for. That's a negative plan that we actually have to keep up. Fifty plans, I'm New York State, so I do. Three, three and a half, we suggested one week, uh, came in, and we're successful applying. So like, it was, it was, to do. Just making a, it's been three days. Unfortunately, we fell in the third, but that's, we have to keep up meeting today. That building, CJ. First of all, that she operated, she's still, second of all, systems she operated. One last, before you do. The seventeen, fourteen to seventeen to twenty million that you have, the more solid number, but you're about ninety-five percent done with the entire electrical engineering of this project. Well, if you, are we still thinking that we set aside a million dollars worth of, of money to do this whole engineering of the entire electrical plant? So, I take it that the fourteen to twenty million that we'll have, that final number, she is not count the, the million dollars for the engineering design.
No, that was finished, right, I must have said, maybe. Eighty, yes.
Okay, so. Comment. Eric. All right. No, no, I just saw, no, I wondered if it was in that totally big number. But we used our money, all of this entire engineering campus, but what in that office, administration. That's your concept, you're, that's showing it still. Or. Eight months. Seventeen. Yeah, well. Turn over.
At that, right. General, ready?
The, the last time you and I talked about this, wasn't scoring well. EFC's. Unified. Application, unified application. It would, see if they. It would score, it would be likely that, although we're going to continue to try to, that if we have to borrow money to do this electrical upgrade. And that's a decision council made when all of them have these numbers for them to consider. That would be the, 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 who's, folks, sorry, that provide the bond, the zero percent interest bond. Uh, EFC, well.
I think the, probably, two percent.
Okay. Which is zero.
Yeah, so, I don't think that there. We were hoping it would follow the ground. They were wanting to find this. If, we were looking for, very excited, but, oh, yeah. Scared and jumping to, such, and that's, that's not a, they're. Use, my case, very good, to confirm. To commit. You want patient. We're still looking for a life for, for, you're not fighting. So. We're, sometimes. Putting every component to the side. So.
So, what was, what was their rationale then? Clean water project. Then goes down, the water that sweeping across into the vertical. Correct, so how was that a topic?
We're, yes. Well, it's actually, it's not a, well, they consider the electrical property. What, of it, we should be considering.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's, so, that's a, which is kind of. Where, works if they, if you're right, say. That we do, city method. I'll just, yeah, met those.
But, uh, so we still, when we were talking about this. First letter, uh, process. And how to spend in a project. So what then is what's replacing the. Yeah. I was, down, I'm considering for the water.
They're unnecessary. Unfortunately, the Northeast, we're not, you know, here, that, the Northeast says, I will use insurance, but we need to pay the whole structure. So, and, and, again. We're, we're. See what happened. Well, my, what the issue they had with the drinking water. So. I think so, when we say committed, how that need to. It's viable, there you. Sure, there's stipulations, like, a while, it's possible, it's. Some of the things that, uh, situate, uh, several. It's a big. Along with, if you, you lies, and you see, on the federal. And it's, you without, you know, for your. And share firm.
So, just still wondering about.
So, wow. Yeah, yeah, I think they're both, they're still looking for funding, they're all, I assume, initially. Was when this project was fourteen, when the distribution project was thirty-five. And, uh, we were told by our case, to live around that, so, obviously, easier, I think, but, yeah, probably. To break the budget, something smaller, find, say, five million. But we have, we're still trying to successfully. Secure some funding.
To maybe answer that question a little better for company. Of, uh, those three or actually four that we bought in the five million dollar projects, the top six that, that you and I create. Uh, have. My, my current understanding, so please disagree with me if I got a problem, the current understanding that the electrical is the priority. One of those, they're all important, they're all needed, but the, the electrical system is the one that is, that is currently fans, top of this. I was fortunate enough to get into my positioning, but our funding was, was already applied to the really water facility. So that was roughly one point six million of the. When it's finished, they can do, you know, give that one point four. So all was, basically, with what, by. Everything was changed down. Thanks for addressing all of that. So, care, that, so, that was hard to be done. Basically, whilst we go, and then. When I walked through that door, the first thing that everybody said was, the electrical, yes. We have a bunch of new equipment, that's probably all the system that's. That we. And, I believe, three, as I said, it's just here. Number, to, to, yeah, to all, something. Just to. Repair. Here's a change. Fortunately. That switchgear.
First, uh, funding for someone to defer this act, because the Soviet, they're still go for their gifts, so, we were looking at. Trying to sell that. Funding. So, uh, urgency. Okay, uh, the. After two, like. Yes, no, uh, I don't think, but they always seem to have one of the lines, eight, three lines. But, one of the lines always seems to have a problem, so they're all starting to switch it on. Like, uh, it's bad, it's, uh. The monster, they had fire subsations, so, those kind of issues, that, yeah, it's you, and that's. Another reason. Off of that, we replace the switchgear without the problem. Downstream, Jess's old, ten forms, so. That, where it goes. We have a test, we have a load testing. See. Where, see, both known to make it through, but nothing apparent. Jess's little guarantees are anything. Breakers, in theory, this is fine, but, I mean, a very fortunate, five, like, batteries, which I'm considering. Like, several, when, several buckets, it's silly, it's, basically, not, they're all. Fortunately, it's not a, so these components, perhaps, leave, really, they can't, so, maybe other, I can, there is.
Thank you.
Um, thanks. On a different subject, let's, here, we're getting results now, monitoring survey.
We're in the process of, we have, uh, they're waiting, uh, just one of our financial pieces, plus. So, hopefully, uh, so it's having popped up in some time this week. Gold last bit. They want to see how we're building, it's very difficult for us to see, get that to our system, so, I mean, it's not easily done. So, we're trying to figure out. Think, yeah, the electronic. Five.
And it sounds like it's all.
Yeah, I think they have the first bag. One, I see, what they're saying is, we're at, we're at high, low rate, you know. I think we're doing that. But, yeah, rates. We do, we would have, I think, it's like. We have. Such, we, yeah, seven, maybe, so. And put together, roughly, they're just, they're really less than, very.
When, when that report comes in, can I ask you to come back in July? Because those two, we, very interested, it's going to be, to understand that. Yes.
Now, before I leave, just, uh, we had a question, three of the more, so, yeah, so, there, with, although, we still. Uh, we've never, uh, said, the initial study was done. It was a very good reporter, usually have threats to, uh, public. What can, first, uh, definitely. Around, we were around, what's your problems? You know, what, what's, don't. How many of you have, of the trespassing? Buffalo, you're. Uh, not necessarily. Not necessarily have. Had some. Three, two, three, four. Except the. They said. One instance where they had. You can think of this. There's. They said. Yeah, always. Come on. Because two reasons. Could be nitrogen. Phosphates from. A lot of scientific systems that they usually from. Fertilized. Fertilizers. Much more. Education. That's supported by fertilizer. I think phosphorus, which comes out of. Two fields. Three days they were. Actually, they. Patrick's, it would be a very far. Limited. Then short distance. Issues. But phosphates. Which part third. So both are shared. Those ones. Is patient. Done, leave it up. The trespassing. Set up the.
So the local dashboard splits in one way. They're. Efficiently. Look through like there's. There is. Flag. Saying that it's a national grid foundation. Did you see that? I didn't decide. I said, I thought of it all. They had library crisis. In the. Along with. By the sprout. Two super hands. Solicited. And several other. Bob's system. And we saw that this. Would have concerned. Not only the students, ladies. Yeah, there's, it's a concern. So for that reason, not with that reason, but the road. Sedition. It's. Resident, so my, my. Is a similar. And I. Land. As soon as part. Work. Very. To the black. Uh, regulation. Didn't have enough work. Something about that. Okay. Okay. Uh, two ways. One is. We met, like I said, we met in. Our county. Or so. To talk. She rises. This is part of this is. For complete. And then New York State gives some of fourth month to ten minutes. Twenty, so we working on that. One thing that we're working on is such. Sewer slash rate. Better to make it for a problem. But. City of. That we go ahead and go. We are watching. Oh, yeah. Well, well, for. So. We just got an email this morning from Chris Brown about. So many. Uh, and guys. And. Do we swallow the mission? I mean, we should have been. Often person I have. Our town to our swag. So that basically. Would be sound. So. Like the. And they have to keep that full time. Just when we got the foot. Certain settling capacity. Uh, you're told you're playing with three point five, you got a wide. Go start the system. Tell me about worship. About. Whether that's. People lives. Have they broken? A lot, once or twice ago. What quality? What is that value? Uh, we actually the topics. When we switch in. It's, it's a much more very organic, early facing quality of. For product, we're trying to learn. I'm. I actually sounded like a lot of that official. Actually tented. That's. Uh, and we also back with. The name is escape. Another like. Come in, honestly. Design a whole left system. So it doesn't need this. By somebody know. Who's there. Uh, the other part. George. Standing. Trail. The boy shall trail. Again. I look. Trail. A long. Then across. Try. They connect all the other trails. They were. So this lane. Trails. Those are. Not official. So how it's. All this. Well, it's really well. Because what happens is answer like a national grid foundation. Bridge. With platform. Look, somebody. Whole platform somewhere. It's like that's a grid. I mean, we've, we've totally seen that. They used to say that. Contact the sheriff's office. Tell people that. We. Call sheriff. Sheriff with us. So we did say we have a work. It was. Did they think that? Uh, it's available. The bottom of the job is all the property. One of the things, one of the regulations of this plan. Is to open up. For that. We heard where it's not impacting erosion. Which is, well, something that. Already. It is. It's waiting. It's not right here. There to get an overall. Uh, for. Where. I mean. If you were ripping things out.
Well. I agree. I agree. But I think totally leaving that that it shouldn't be anywhere near. Of which.
That's what. It is the thing too. So this is going right.
I'll leave there. Like you said, you said, you said. Yeah, there's a great explode. It should lose that. Five is within about. Ten fifteen. Well, not me, but I don't think so.
No. Pictures. House of Lords. That she is. The. Something just so.
Yeah, they tear down. They're the buildings.
It's individuals that are, that are mountain like clothes and around here that are. And it is stop to this. John, I think sheriff all we've contacted and told us. And try and get them. But the time you get there, they're all kind of. Some say. Classic, it's some kind of handle system or something. A secret. With the. The ranger, steward. And then. Always talking about putting cameras. They can cheaper, but I don't know. Unless you. Where unless you get the license plate. Or something.
Well, if it's. You see something. So. We do. I'm telling you, you don't. Because of my.
I just want to. Just directly so. We are on our. It's very. And it's the. To try. The trans. The water.
Absolutely. They went after speaking to, to councilman. To others about this. We, uh, we knew the education and work of the. Playtime Queensberry girl, some Queensberry students that was. I, I, I think you remember mentioning this. I called one of my kids who were in high school lot of that, those. Favorite. Pardon. We organized and, um, and we have. A walk on trail outside of that. Um, that sentiment area right around the, the water shade down the hand road. We did that originally allocated by Senator very little. So we started to walk the trail. The two superintendents, myself, Councilman Stroud, Bill and several of the staff. Discovered the extensive. Lane. We also did, uh, adrenic bikers, uh, forgot. Adrenic, something site was, um, Barbara. Yeah, and, um, and they're the ones who helped put recycling, um, project in at, at the, um, at. Dirty lane, thinking. Um, so we are, this is all part of that process. All those unsanctioned, illegal, like things that are down there. Where the erosion is bringing them all to the road where, where, where the original plan was. It's simple little and, and applied to the work and got allocated. Get it from, we have any bulk of the senator stack as well to, to come up with that money. This is a plan to do it all and to start working towards that project. And. Clearly there and absolutely.
Okay. You said you got.
No, we had. Now in front of. I like. They going forward. Uh, they just. Uh, or say. Our water treatment facility. I even went down. Water facility. Thirty hundred. Worship.
That was.
Oh, with that camera's kind. It's off.
Well, there's one place where. Always shut out. Sort of.
It's the way. So.
And water. Which that's right. On board. I remember last.
Actually. Well. It's. Two. Four. They're next. They're very much.
And to help them with that, this, um, they, they want to make sure that the use. The illegal. Illegal bike. Being these things removed. And so the legal one away from the, the drainage areas, erosion areas. Part of it, so is this Warren County solid water position. Um, this part time position split by the city of Glens Falls. And help us aggressively move forward. That is finally explained with that.
Yes, all of this. Means. It's individuals. In the presentation. Part of the process is this was. Had a. Commission sort of. You're not sure. They all very. See her. Would be. What a support. To count. Trains. To.
Thank you. Stay cool. Next up, the committee report is constantly. Constant guy. Constant. Um, just that I noticed that the, excuse me. They use our task force, we're being lead or surveying right now. Um, the week of July sixth, so we all. Council needs to.
Billy, any books I could be working on.
You. Council. Council. Good. Um. See, under consent agenda, we have six ideas to address. There are questions and comments concerned about any of the six. The findings under consent agenda. Five point one is the approval of six, ten, twenty, twenty twenty five county council meeting minutes. Five point two, agenda approval of controls of swimming and check. Five point three, approval of community development annual payments of six hundred and forty dollars. Five point four, approval of both licensing applications. Number one thirty one dash twenty twenty five through one thirty five, which is twenty twenty five. On five twenty five, consent agenda approval of growth permits number forty on twenty twenty five. Through forty three, twenty twenty five. And five point six is the approval of. Second. All favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under the regular, uh, agenda, I have five resolutions from three city departments. To address this evening. Are there any other resolutions in this section? Like, you have any questions, concerns? And so I'll hold them until the end so we can discuss.
Yes, I'd love to. Discuss. Operator.
So I'll go. Read the sec- section seven alone. Go to seven eight, which is the mayor's office. Do all these first, we move back to, to seven. Payment. Under the police department, uh, a discussion of, uh, to approve. See, see of eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars of reimbursement from the school resource office. Uh, officer services of the city of Glens Falls School District. We motion approve. With second. Um, favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under eight is. We have one final. Resolution from the mayor's office discussing, uh, to waive the city's, excuse me, resolution to. Uh, waive the city's open container ordinance on Saturday, July twelfth through three P M to ten P M. For the. BFF LLC Summer Jam Block Party, which should be held at the center. South Street, the area. Bound by Broad, New York Streets with no. No container. Maybe there. Attached to a motion. For the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under, um, seven, um, point one, seven point two. Um, I've asked, uh, attorney, Carl Bittner, since these are, um, legal proceedings, wanted to go into executive session. Um, but let's do seven point three and get that away. Um, sorry, yes. Seven two and seven three are legal proceedings I'm going to take a session to discuss. That's okay with everybody? Come back up, load up those. Seven point one. Um, Dan, do you have a question about?
I do have a question. It's often related.
You owe three minutes. Okay. Great. Um, so let's see. Either we have.
Listen to you.
Or. Take a few moments, go into executive session, the public can, can stay here to go. I pause and leave it open if you like. We're going to the, um, court chambers, uh, real quick and, um, have a conversation from that.
Seven. Favorite. The opposed motion carries. Seven point one is approved to pay KFW charges. Group paid an amount of seventy five thousand dollars to be added in the previous budget of funds of ten thousand dollars for favor assistance for the upcoming city wide rate assessment. Do we have a motion?
Thank you.
All favor. Any opposed motion? Motion carries. Thank you. Seven point two is a resolution that the common council of the city runs balls hereby according to settlement of twenty twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four rear property tax law or proceedings entirely. Don G F Hudson L L.